Budget next year.
Got me. Okay, we're back on. We're gonna go back to the cemetery. Sorry about that, guys.
So in the cemetery, we've, we've got about two thousand spaces that are vacant. Having about one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty services per year. So that gives us about thirteen years. That doesn't mean we need to wait for the thirteen year, but we've got some time to plan too. Again, we have the cemetery that's out on one fourteen that's can be realized and developed. There.
How much space is there?
Uh, we're still working on that because it doesn't have that many spaces that have been used. But I think Dustin.
Well, he looks like a lot, but I'm not saying that's correct.
The, the biggest concern and, and Justin and I found this out during discussions with Dustin and cemetery folks. The building that's out there and initially the, the compensation to me was, well, we, we have to have a building. Better storage for our equipment, but also a better place for our guys to get out of the elements and those kind of things. Well, as we discuss that more, we found out it's more than that. We found out that there's people that go out there to meet with our staff to discuss the funeral of their family member or their friend. And there's times that they're sitting on five gallon buckets. There's times they're spreading out plans on tables or on the floor.
Seen that bill.
And this is at both cemeteries or?
That's just this one. But I'm sure if it was that one, they would be meeting here and doing the same thing. So.
Thing's not even as big as this room.
No.
The one at one fourteen, I think it's like the size of a wellhouse.
Yes.
That one is a wellhouse. This one here at this is where they do all of their customer interaction. So we have got to look at that over the next few months to this budget year. To figure out what we need to do to have a facility that's not only proper for our employees, but is proper for family members or friends that want to come in and discuss. I had just assumed they did all that at the funeral home and it was, but evidently not. And so to me, I, I felt really bad and embarrassed as a city that
Me too.
we weren't presenting. And it doesn't mean we have to present, you know, this glamorous luxurious place. But it needs to be nice because we're already dealing with a death and
Breathing.
We don't need to make it.
They go out there to drive around to find the place that they're looking to bury their loved one. And then when they find a place and they go inside to lay off the app and to look at it and pay the paperwork. There's not even really a table is for them to sit and it's hot or it's cold in there. And, and that's also where the shovels are and, and all the weed eaters and the things that they need. And it's, it's not a good representation of us. It doesn't need to be. I'm not talking about a Taj Mahal. I'm not talking about courts countertops and.
But we need to do something. And so we're going to be looking over that. Coming back with the recommendation, it won't be before this budget's adopted. We just found this out in the last week or so. We're going to be looking at various options we could pursue. And then once we find one, we feel is best, we'll bring it back to council and, and also with a recommendation of how we fund it, take care of it. Okay, I know I kind of jumped, but I wanted to make sure before we left revenues, the discussion the property taxes and my recommendation, and I can add it to this, so y'all will have it, that we transfer only two cents to the cemetery fund. Council can change that any year they want. Um, but I think that we can put that one cent, that seventy-six thousand to stronger and better use. As, as we continue to make very progressive steps within the city of, of taking care of things.
Thankful it's there.
Okay, um, we will jump into four zero one, the legislative, which is council. You can run with this or I can run. It doesn't matter. Probably the biggest thing in here in, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, is this where we put the fifty thousand for the centennial?
Yes, it's the very last line item under a capital outlay. I did go ahead and get it renamed Centennial Celebration. If y'all can just double check my spelling because I'm a numbers person and not letters. So, um, if that looks like it's misspelled, just let me know. But, um, so that is specifically for, for the centennial. That way it's transparent for the public. It's transparent for you guys. It'll be easy to run, um, numbers. How much have we spent? What did we spend it on? It's all going to go to that bucket. So whether it's like marketing, whatever that looks like, it's all going to be in that bucket.
Okay.
Any questions on that one initially?
No, it's basically the same except for the addition of fifty.
Right, correct.
Uh, city management, your next one, it's.
Um, as we're going through this, a big thing that we did change, um, all of the top departments, um, when they traveled and purchased food, when they purchased food for staff. Um, some of the departments have, um, water coolers. There wasn't a specific line item. Some departments had a food line item. Not everybody did. So, uh, we went ahead and created a food line item for everybody across the board. Um, so when, no matter what the food is purchased for, whether it's for travel, whether it's for staff, whether it's a Christmas meal, whatever that looks like, um, they're going to have that specific food, food line item now. So you'll see that difference from, um, twenty-four to twenty-five, but I wanted to point that out before we dive into all of the, the departments.
And for conversation, that was going and travel and meetings most of the time.
Yeah, she's misleading.
Yes.
So is a casual line item when Justin and I want to be casual and.
When you wear jeans.
Okay, that's what we're finding you for wearing jeans.
It's just when we go to Key West, which, which, what, where are we at? What is?
When we're going to Disneyland to celebrate my birthday.
Oh.
I don't think that's enough.
Um, yeah, everything here was pretty much the same across the board. Um, as a reminder, the personnel services do include that three percent cola already. Um, but yeah, no major changes here.
What is casual? Just?
Casual is, um, seasonal workers. So, uh, the, like Destin has parks people that are ca- uh, casual. I'm pretty sure all the pool people are under casual. So it's, it's seasonal workers just different. If it's helpful, we can, we can go in there and change that verbiage to seasonal.
So under casual for city man?
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, max, max is under intern.
He doesn't look very casual.
He's not casual.
Yes. I think it should say.
That's a compliment.
I think max would be more appropriate.
I would probably, I would do is if you could go in and leave casual and then put slash seasonal.
Okay.
And do that for a couple of months and then we'll fade out casual completely. I just, when people look at it, they see that word casual. It just, that's why I was, I thought I knew what it was. And I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Any questions on this one?
Sure.
City secretary?
Um, the big.
Casual department.
Um, probably that there are going to be some fluctuation, not fluctuations, some changes. A bigger reason being, um, Andrea went from a one-person department to two. So her supply line did increase, um, her travel. I think she's anticipating some travel and training for Savannah to go to. So that has doubled, I believe, in and of itself. Um, advertising did increase significantly. We adopted the budget last year, um, where we split the advertising between, uh, city secretary and HR. And then as, as the year went on, James, um, wanted to start doing the, uh, monthly newsletter. And that takes up a good portion. What is that?
About a thousand dollars a month.
A month. So that's just twelve thousand dollars right there off the top of, for those, uh, monthly newsletters. I think they are super beneficial though. They're really neat. It's a good way to highlight the departments. But, um, that's just part of why, um, Andrea's, uh, more than, than doubled her advertise- advertising line.
The remainder of the advertising is just all the required legal notices.
Right.
Not anything fancy or fun that we.
We do some marketing, like when, um, the football tab comes out in the paper, City of Loveland always supports the kids, um, things like that. And we'll, we'll support whenever the chamber has their, their tabloid out and those things. But most of our money besides the, the newsletter will be our legal advertising and as required.
And just, and I know you, you know, we added the person. It takes about three years to get certified in the municipal clerk's program. Andrea will retire one of these days. She's got about fifteen more years with the city. But.
I mean, say fifty?
Fifty, fifty. You know, she is, you know, mentioned and none of us know what tomorrow brings, but all of us like to, to look down the road and say, you know, five years down the road, I may seriously think about this. And I want our city to be prepared. She'll be difficult to ever replace. But also I, I know her heart well enough. She would never leave us in a bind. So I want to make sure that we can get someone in there and get them trained, learn everything they can from her. And, um, and then when she decides to go in fifty years, the other person should be well versed in all of this.
Thank you for that. I actually think I learn every day from Savannah. So she's a, she's a great utility player and, uh, I'm super lucky to have her in our, in my department.
But you need to let her know she's got fifty years as well because you've got fifty, she's got fifty.
Hundred and six years till to go.
I think we've all learned, especially y'all, y'all work here every day. I had, I don't. But as we've had some turnover in this last year, it's something that we've learned is that we need to be planning for the future and longevity and cross-training. And so we're not left in alert because God forbid things do happen or people do find new adventures. So hopefully we're trying to learn from ourselves on these. It's a prime example right there, I think.
Well, I would have been one of the only departments that didn't have any redundancy. And, um, that is kind of scary. So it would have been Justin doing minutes and agendas.
I could do it.
You can. You're a jack of all trades.
Don't forget casual max.
Yep.
And casual max.
That's why I could do it.
Compliment max.
Any questions there?
And just point this out, y'all probably noticed, but the bottom right-hand corner in green is this budget worksheet. We left your old ones in there in case you had notes or scribbling on there. Transfer them out.
There's a yellow page behind them. So we know they're separated.
Some have yellow. One council member has pink pages.
I hope he does.
You didn't put them in his pink binder, so. Oh, there really is. That's a lot of hot pink.
More than one way to skin a cat.
I love it. I can't wait for you to see it.
Okay.
He hated the pink binder.
Uh, four oh four finance. Cynthia.
Um, everything here is pretty similar. Um, the big difference is the software and computer maintenance. Um, Sarah had, um, a software for a depreciation for, um, our, our depreciation schedule. I for the life of me have not been able to figure it out. There's a lot of information missing. Um, so at some point this year, I threw my hands up and tried and found a more friendly, um, program. That's been working very, very well for me. That's what that increases is the cost of, um, the program. It, it is significantly more, but when I tell you it was a load off my shoulders, I, I probably spent more time trying to figure out the old program versus just from like meeting deciding which one I wanted to go to, plug in our information and running the, the schedules. It took me longer to try to figure it out and then I didn't even figure it out. So, um, that's, that's the biggest cost increase. Um, professional services, that is where our quarterly. Forgive me, it is a bill that we pay to Hockley County appraisal.
That's a part of the appraisal.
Yes. So those are the quarterly bills there. Um.
I'm sorry, there what? The appraisal district, Hockley County.
Yeah, entities fund H ten.
Did we include funds in here for the new, um, park position to help?
That is.
Transition or is that water admin?
That is in water admin. Um.
Okay.
We can talk that through when we get there, but right now this is just me in this department. Um, so if we talk about it later, uh, when, once we get to enterprise, we'll talk it through. This one might change and you'll, you guys will see why later. Um, but everything else is pretty much the same across the board minus that, that food line item that I told you guys is what's going to be there across the board for everybody.
Municipal court?
Um, same thing here. Same across the board. The biggest increase is going to be in professional services. That is just anticipating, um, the credit card fees that we have, um, for our customers to come in and utilize, um, card services. We have seen those fees skyrocket, um, over the last two years since I've been here drastically. So that's why, um, that line item has almost doubled. Um, I know we're working through, we have plans in place to kind of address that issue, but this is just what we're.
Sure. A way that I was going to say, like, put that out for bid or to renegotiate with vendors.
We're in the very, very beginning stages of it. I think our biggest, um, hurdle, uh, we're, our program is in code and they only. Either you go with them or you go with the vendor we're already in. There's no other options. So it would be going, go, yeah, going to Tyler, which we don't know how, how much more beneficial that would be financially. So, um, we're in the early, early stages right now.
We'll talk about this later, but credit card fees are something we're looking at as well. Because, um, we charge a two and a half percent deal. That there's some initial review that showing it's costing us more than that. I do not think the city should have to pay anything. If you're going to use a credit card, if your place charges you five percent, then that's what gets tagged on. I don't think the city ought to be making up any difference. So we're going to continue to look through that. It's kind of hard to pull it apart because of the different credit cards, but we're going to keep working on that, look at it. The other thing, it's not a big increase, but within, uh, professional services, there's a hundred and fifty dollars a, a month for video magistrate. Uh, the county went to, um, video magistrate services, which is allow the judges to remote in for, for some people. And so, uh, since our judge helps with that, we got pulled into it. But it's, it's a good program too. That way Judge Rowan doesn't have to go down there all the time.
Is there more safety with that? Is that any safer?
I, I would say it's a little bit safer, chief. I mean, I know you, everybody down there is friendly and kind and operative.
Generally speaking, um, I don't know that it's any different safety wise because there's not that close of contact. They're going for remittance. Any questions on municipal court?
Fire department?
Fire. I think we stayed pretty straight across the board. There are some line items that we adjusted for, um, just inflation purposes, like the laundry and cleaning. It's not significant, but just trying to be prepared for that. Um, you'll stay the same. I think everything outside of personnel was pretty, pretty straight across.
We haven't. I won't say a hundred percent, but we haven't placed the majority of capital request into the budget yet. We're trying to get through the essential stuff to see where we sit. Go with y'all. Get that resolved. I know in fire department, uh, Chief Patty, that we applied for the safer grant, which would give us three additional firefighters full-time. Um, the program's changed as far as how it's funded, but the first year is.
Five, I think.
Five people?
No, 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 no. We're asking. Five percent.
Uh, and then.
They pay ninety-five?
They pay ninety-five first year and they, they used to pay for the first three years a hundred percent. And.
That sounds pretty good though.
No, there's a match now. And so now if we get it, I think it's, they pay ninety-five percent of the salary the year one.
But I think year two it drops to fifty-fifty.
Something like that.
And, and then year three it drops, I think maybe forty, sixty. It's to get you used to get ready to pay for.
Gives you some time.
To get there. What was happening is when you got it, you were supposed to commit to funding these people. Cities didn't do anything and because they had three years and then they were like, now do we do with these people? So they changed it to kind of force you to participate in the game. You know when we'll hear from it?
That's, that's the, uh, people we're looking at to hire to maintain this. The truck.
The, the big truck that we've got to figure out one of these days how to.
Another capital.
Another large item that's sitting out there. And it's hard. And I know, uh, Patty will be the first one to tell you, you know, we, we buy some expensive equipment and even PD's somewhat in this, this arena. We buy expensive stuff and we hope we never have to use it. But the day that we have to use it, we're sure glad that it's there.
Absolutely.
So.
Is there, is there a reason why laundry and cleaning was so much higher, forty-two sixteen? Here, I mean, it was eight when it was budgeted to be thirty-five hundred. Pick that up to four the next year, but it's just doubled.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the numbers.
It, laundry and cleaning, this year's budget, actual expenses, eight thousand. It was budgeted at thirty-five hundred. Do you? I know you made them take baths and clean up over there.
Cleaner over there now.
Actually it is. You can sweep every day and.
I think part of it is, it may be that we got, uh, new uniforms and we're taking care of those to make sure they stay clean and look sharp, but we can look into that and get back to y'all.
I'll talk from my head.
When, uh, discussing with departments, it was a trend that we've seen amongst, uh, all departments that some of the laundry and cleaning included some chemicals that they utilize as well. So it got tied into these, uh, for fire, they also have a chemical line as well, but I think there was just increased costs. If you notice now that you have the reference in your mind, look at parks and other departments, you'll notice that their, um, uh, projections are also increased as well.
But we just didn't increase it for, for the year. So that's why I was wondering.
When I looked historically, like there are, um, like this year was just an outlier. Yeah, like the previous layers, they either just barely went over or they stayed right around, um, the four thousand. So this year was just an outlier.
We'll have you an answer at the next session.
Um, the next line item is that safety supplies. Um, that increase, they had some ARPA purchases there. And so it wasn't accounted for in the budget, but the money's going to be moved over where it's gonna even out.
Their SC. The CB. Well, SC, whatever.
No, those, those are going to be a capital line item off the top of my head. It's like the radios that they ordered, the twelve radios. Um, the smaller, the smaller ones. I think they bought some rope. Just the smaller, the smaller ARPA purchases, not, um, not anything gigantic, but you add them all together and it'll, it'll account for the job. Um, the professional services is so high, that's where we, uh, pay, uh, Chief Patty out of. When we get the invoice for her, her services, that's where it's just been coded historically. Um, next year we've already made a note if, um, if she is still here, it's gonna, I'll have them code it to, uh, the not casual. Now you have the word.
Yeah, seasonal. Hot and not the cold, but I would be.
Seasoned.
But you also noticed that forty-one eleven is, is lower. So, I mean, it's just offset for now.
Yeah. So it just, it, it offsets, but, um, it, yeah, out of forty-one eleven.
Do you know why machinery and equipments is three forty-eight and we budgeted?
They had, um, the truck, the I can see it on the spreadsheet, the color that I put it in. It was one of the purchases that were for last year and y'all carried over to this year. Um, and now I'm seeing that we did, I didn't get the budget adjustment in.
Okay, let's chase that down as well if we can help council understand that or if someone asks them, they know what, what it is, please. Any questions on fire? Patty, you want to add anything? Just want to be quiet in the court.
Without having things in front of me, it's hard for me to answer some of that stuff. But I can, if you got questions, I can always.
Just make something up.
Yeah. And we're also fixing to, I, I think one of the things that we had talked about are professional services. Some of the stuff had gone back into safety, um, but that really needs to be professional services. So when we have our, our masks, we have to have our air tanks, uh, inspected every year. We have to have our, um, our fire engines pump test every year. The stuff is every year should be professional. And I think they were putting it in other line items as well. So you may see an increase on that.
So we're down, you know, four thousand or so on fire, but there's also other things are up and there's no capital. Or machinery and equipment.
One of the things that we've been emphasizing this year is telling our department heads to put it in the proper line item. In the past, they put it wherever they had the most money, so things weren't over. Well, it makes it difficult to properly budget, properly account for if you're moving it around. It needs to be where our charter account says that item is covered. And Cynthia, uh, has been doing a great job of catching that. Eric's been doing a good job of trying to help people understand that that's where it needs to be. It's probably going to take us two or three budgets to get that a hundred percent that direction. There's departments that are notoriously famous for putting it in places where, uh, you don't notice it, but.
Me, and we have four people doing POs. And so I may look at that and I'm, I'm probably one of the worst going, well, I think it should go there, but that's not where the previous budget had it. And so now we have all of our POs going to one person. And he's coding it because he knows, like, we're every industry, the budget stuff. And so now he goes to him and he's coding it properly. And we do that before we even send it over.
Any questions on fire? Police department?
Um, biggest thing with police department, as a reminder, we did separate our, um, animal shelter personnel and, uh, operation cost. So that you're going to see a lot of the line items go down and that's why, um.
The separate tab for animals.
Yeah. So animals, animal shelter is four twenty, department four twenty still in fund one. Um, that's going to be the biggest difference.
We're still working through, um, some things that chief has brought to our attention. One is the fleet. We're trying to, to go out for RFP, um, leads and leasing and it's turning into a more complicated adventure than I ever thought it could be, but, um, I, I, if I read all the emails today on the questions, I, 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 I don't know why we did this. It's, it's created a quagmire. Um, but I know the chief went over her budget a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. Uh, she since has applied for a grant with an endowment foundation.
Hope that works and wasn't, uh, I won't say a waste of your time.
Biggest grant.
That's it.
Um, I asked for the red dot optics, so about eleven thousand.
How much?
The red dot optics is what I've asked for, uh, for about eleven thousand.
Wasn't a huge thing, but it was like, hey, if we could try to get something else, capital that we need and I won't say want, need, but make us safer.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but where are we at on the vest or whatever that is here?
So, um, we have got all of the ones that are, uh, currently at expiration date or coming up on expiration date ordered. They will be here September first is supposed to be our ship date. So they should be here, um, pretty early in September. They will be here September first is supposed to be our ship date, so they should be here um pretty early in September. Uh, the other ones we're waiting to find out, um, because again, those have the expiration date a little bit further on that we're waiting to find out with the oxy grant that we've also applied for, for ten thousand to finish replacing those out.
We still have four vacancies?
Yes, sir. We actually test on um August fifth. We have two that are graduating the academy of August seventh that are not ours yet, but they are very, very interested. Um, one of them is um prior military, he's an older gentleman. He does have the uh BA education benefits. He's also applied with Midland PD, but that's not something the Midland has, so that's more of a draw for him to come here. But I think we are testing, if everybody shows up, we should have six lateral officers showing up on Tuesday.
That's huge for you, right?
Extremely huge.
Cause I had to like dumb it down. Lateral means they've worked somewhere before. I'm sorry, just very ignorant to this.
We have four openings currently, yes. Well, your favorite?
That's correct. But you would have.
Hire them all.
And that would be.
Where are you gonna put that in the budget?
We'll figure that out later.
Mister Powell said it, not council.
We have breaking news.
They're hard, they're hard to.
Via, via my email.
We are pleased to inform you that Covenant Health has reached a new contract agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Being down to the last hour.
It just came through my email, seven oh nine PM.
That's probably came through my.
I know everyone's checking now.
See, I don't, we don't have hair established with anybody in covenant, cause my husband and I don't go to the doctor, our pediatrician is UMC. So we're Blue Cross Blue Shield, but I don't get these letters, so I was clueless when y'all talked about it.
Well, that's okay.
I never. Heck, yeah. I haven't gotten a letter in your covenant? That's crazy.
Better than the alternative. It's better than saying any tomorrow.
Yeah, makes life a little bit easier.
Options. Sorry to interrupt, but that was good news.
Any questions for PD?
Is there on, on clerical, on forty-one twelve, so you know, we were budgeted for three eighty-nine, we projected to be at two seventy-five and then we're budgeting for four thirty-five in.
So um, they had, they brought Brittany over and she came in at a higher rate than what the previous um person in that position was. And then in the council, the, the three, three percent in.
Is it so much lower because there was a vacancy?
And I think one of those was a creative position. The one that Brittany had was an officer's position that was absorbed into a civilian position.
How many clerical people do you have? Just Brittany and Donna?
Yes.
No, 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 dispatch is in there too. And then we know that.
I was mathing, I was mathing.
Dispatch, so that's, that's fully staffed.
Just poorly. Tonight.
I was mathing.
Is dispatch fully staffed now?
Uh, no ma'am, we do have four openings in dispatch currently. Uh, we are streamlining those interviews as well. Interviewing weekly, so.
But back to your interviews, that's huge, right? To have four laterals. I mean, that's game changer. That's great.
He's still over here trying to explain to me how you could go ahead and hire all six. All those vacancies, you've had it in the budget and so it's just piling up, so you should have the money. That's what he says.
Mister Powell.
I said, we don't have the vehicles for them. He said, they can double up.
Do not help police department spend money.
That was part of the council's job.
No, sir. No, sir. PD spends twice what they give budget.
I was over here like, wait, what about us? We need, we need six.
See that on my job description.
I'll change it, sure.
And I might approve it.
Any questions on police department? Our PD continues to do phenomenal things in our community.
Congratulations on your large bust, I don't know, for lack of a better word.
But that was a while not.
It was, uh, those guys were stoked about that. And it has now stemmed to, they had another one last night and then DPS came in today and we did a search warrant on the house, all stemming from.
That was on Sherman, wasn't it? Because there was a lot of cops and my mom called me. Are you out? And I'm like, would you think I'm the one who starts by the cops? Somebody on the news article was like, I bet that happened at the, at the stripes on one fourteen and somebody goes, did you even read the article? Was that all subs? Like, I bet it was stripes on one fourteen.
No.
Which also.
We only have one all subs.
Yeah, if you would get to them all the other day, you would agree.
He just does that drive mob crazy?
Okay, four oh eight, um, Cynthia?
Um, inspection, so here um there are some increases.
Biggest thing is in training.
Yes.
Eli's new, Spencer's new, I'm learning all that. New codes, um updating our building codes, fire code, all of those will be coming to y'all in September. So um we'll be having that. One of the things I stated with fire, we're gonna be asking for council to approve uh that businesses have a Knox box out there. And that's basically, it's a little, you'll see them, they're metal boxes that are near the entrance that only the fire department and a few other select people have a key.
Just fire, right?
Okay, you go in that dreamland, their fire department is the only one that has the key. Uh, and they can get into the business without tearing down the door.
Hey, so like you're concerning me that somebody outside the fire department does has.
What are you alluding to? I had never heard of that before. I don't, I mean, I don't know that anybody in town even has those. That's totally cool.
Businesses, some of the businesses do. Um, and.
But I shouldn't know. That's okay.
Because it's not about doing a, a, a newspaper article on that, because a lot of businesses don't understand what it's for.
Think they've never even heard of it. It's never been offered to them. It's never been brought up. It's, it's just new to, I think you brought it to level it. That's just gonna be honest.
So one of the other things, it's not just for businesses. So I know that round, I think it was Round Rock just did a program uh for older people that are like likely to fall.
Yes.
For, for older people, so that we can get in their house if if we need to, in case they can't get to the door and open it.
So how does this box work? How can I, the robber, not just break into this box and get the key?
Well, the hinges are on the inside of the box and so you can't get in it. I have the only key that will fit that box and whenever you call me, uh, even police don't have the key to that. So I go in, I open it, they will put their key to their whatever door and then I lock it back up and that's it.
And I, I'm just, I can't just hit that with a bat. It's not, okay, I'm again.
Them will do it recessed into the building and so they, they can't even knock it off, but even if they did, they can't.
Yeah. Been at the credit union, I mean, when your guys suggested it, we were like, that sounds great. We'd never heard of that. Our, our construction people didn't even recommend it, you know?
How do you get, who has these boxes? Who has them?
Uh, businesses generally.
You asking, how do you get one?
How do you get one?
Oh, well, so to get one, um, whoever the business is or the homeowner, they contact Knox box. And then Knox sends me a thing going, do you want you or not? And I say yes or no, and they approve it. And then if I approve it, then they can uh, the box. So we can't just buy one. And my key doesn't fit anything like anywhere else in America and nobody else's key fits the level land. Now, we do have, we do have one for Whit Harrell. Um, so we, we do have two keys, ones for Whit Harrell and then ones for everything here for their school.
I love that public service announcement for that though, cause I really, that's new to level land, I think. I'd never heard it until you said it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful thing. I really do, cause it, it, if anything, if anything doesn't happen, I'm not.
I can think of tons of people that the ambulance goes, can think of tons of older people where the ambulance goes multiple times a year. Makes perfect sense.
You know how expensive those knot boxes are?
Um, we just sold one to Burger for, I'm thinking it was like six hundred bucks. And then we sold one to, maybe it was Yaw.
We do have one. It's not given yet, but ordered it, it's in box.
Maybe we just, but the one before was like nine hundred. So it depends on which box it is and how many keys it'll hold. Because you can get them where they just hold one key or, or some that'll hold a whole bunch of them.
We have more doors, maybe something like that.
Reason I was, cause I knew they were expensive, but I couldn't remember how much they were. It was just.
Yeah, I, I didn't gotten that high, but they have, so.
You know, as rotaries and lines clubs and other service are going, what are a project? That could be a great project to help. Homebound folks or people like that, that can't afford that six hundred dollars that we say, we could do ten or fifteen a year if.
And then one of the things that y'all approved on ARPA funds was we now have two mounted ones, one on the engine and one on one of our brush trucks, um, that the key is, is in there, it's locked in there. And you can't turn it, you can't get it out unless you put in your code. So every one of my guys will have their own code. And if anything, I need to know like who accessed, they can recognize that ability to know who accessed that key and you can't have the same code for two people. So that's kind of cool. Security. I believe in security.
A great addition to leveling.
I think my other chief believes in security too. Sometimes.
Any questions in inspections?
Just glad we have Eli. I think he's doing a great job. He's not here, but wanna brag on him. Talking it out of the park.
You will be at the meeting Monday to introduce our new guy. The other thing that um is a little bit more, um, we have our agreement with Safe Belt. And we're still, they help, Eli is not available or when we've got a lot more work, we need an expertise. We'll still be utilizing them, cause he's still learning. So uh, but it's been a good investment. They've been very helpful. Inspections and he's gone to Wolfherth and other places that are seeing some fast growth of and looking and learning how to do, catch different things. Four oh nine, emergency and health service.
Yes, um, the bigger thing that changed, there's gonna be some funds in buildings. Um, James, if you'll talk about that, I, I wasn't in the loop on that one. I think he had come with um some.
Which number?
Last minute projects.
Buildings.
Four, three, twenty-one.
Yeah, eleven thousand. That part of that, um.
Is that gonna be Communications Tower Shack or something?
No, Destin, the numbers I've gotten are adding up more than eleven thousand. That's why I'm trying to overlook them. I do know that he has um six thousand in here for cyclone fence at the tower site. And a generator at the tower sites, about ten thousand. He's also been working on the, the learn network uh, with our wireless stuff between South Plains and everything. And then also our access control prod, project, which manages um our various buildings throughout town of controlling entry and exit and also if there's an emergency of being able to notify uh PD.
I, I wanted to add, and I might be repeating what Mister Fisher said, six thousand for a fence around the tower and uh ten thousand for a generator.
Outside of that line item, everything else um stayed uh close to the same. Questions on that one?
Street Department? Everything is pretty close to the same. Asterisk, just another one of these items we will need to discuss um, when we do our strategic planning. But we will need to replace a loader in the street department and what traditionally happens. Uh, the existing loader that we have, you know, to the recycling center. And then uh, we take the one from the recycling center, either auction it or use it as a trade-in for the new. But that's an item when we start talking capital or even future expenses that we have to look at as well. Questions on streets?
I'm good, thank you.
Up, stay as up next and that stayed pretty, pretty flat as well. The biggest change is just gonna be personnel.
Talk about that loader like when? Now, answer.
I mean, within the next year or two.
How much is the loader?
About in this year. That's what we're looking at right now. We're trying to get through all of our essential pieces and then start seeing what do we have room for in capital and and then which capital is the most critical. So we'll have that probably Tuesday night, capital discussion.
And even for not getting it now, it's like to, like, planning for loader.
Yeah, loader's about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Way less than I thought. I don't know what I thought, but.
This is one with three wheels. Total tricycle.
Just repeating, um, what I said, shop was pretty, pretty great across the board, same. Um, the difference is gonna be the, the uh three percent cola and insurance.
Any reason utilities were so high there? Last year?
We we ran into some issues with Excel. They were changing um software programs on their end. We were overcharged and then we got a credit and um those those bills and those credits were placed in wrong departments. Um, Eric had brought that to me and just in the middle of preparing budgets and stuff, I felt like it was not gonna be a valuable use of time to try to go track it down um and correct it. It would be, just be better to explain it. This is why it is. And kind of use our time more efficiently elsewhere.
Probably we go through audit, auditor will make some adjustments.
And that's a lot of the increase.
Uh, parks?
Parks, um the biggest change here or the biggest increase you're gonna see is in capital, um forty-five thirty-one improve other than buildings. That six hundred thirty-five thousand is what the LCD is uh paying for the um projects that Dustin put in front of them and they approved. So that's what, where that significant difference is coming from. Outside of that, everything else did stay relatively the same. Questions?
Information, acknowledging?
Um, biggest change here, so in talking with Cole in meeting, we did add travel meetings and training. Um, since he's taken on this new role, he did uh advise that he was gonna be needing to do some training here. I thought it would be best practice if it's related to um IT stuff for it to come out of the IT fund. So any traveling that's gonna come out of his um emergency management is gonna be related to emergency management. So that uh, one of the big changes there. Everything else was, was relatively the same.
So there's the software.
Yeah, Tyler um in code stuff will come out of there, or sorry, Blue Layer, that's who our IT.
Cole's gonna start being also like an add to, you wanna say that?
He, he's our, he's gonna be our point person that when. He's gonna be our point person that when we. Used to in the past, whenever we had an IT, just everybody contacted. Blue Layer, if they needed a new laptop, new computer, they contacted. We didn't have it really going through any one person. And so we asked. Um, Cole to take that on and Justin helps him as well, just to kind of have that backup. So if something happens. We've got somebody available. To tell you, we're moving forward on this item. We did in um. Before Joe left, Joe uh, got uh, Blue Layer to. Do an inventory of our equipment. And so we do have a list of all of our IT equipment and also a. Developed a replacement schedule. Stuff, so. We're trying to get it rotated out and plan accordingly. Professional services.
Be building certain buildings.
It should be building services.
Already turned and.
Like they're missing something. Um, one thing that's gonna stick out like a sore thumb is a twenty eight thousand dollar expense in capital outlet. That was when we had to replay. It was the meters on this.
All the AC HVAC units.
Okay, um, that when that incident occurred this year wasn't anything we planned for, but it did happen. So that that's gonna be sticking out um. There amongst all those zeros. Everything else across the board was pretty. Pretty similar to last year's budget.
And the eighty three thousand in buildings, forty three twenty one.
That might be where it came out of. Then I'll have to figure out. What this twenty eight is. Yeah, no, the.
Look at both of them and tell you what they are.
Oh, the twenty eight thousand, see, it's it comes to me, is the security system. That we, the new updates that we did. Um, so the key fobs, the um, cameras. The television, anything that had to do with the security system updates. That's what eight thousand is. And then the HVAC came out of buildings.
But we need to break down what all else came out of there because that's eighty thousand over what was budgeted.
Okay.
Other questions on? This one. Professional services.
Um, everything uh, prof- legal services did increase. Um. Going ahead and just kind of. Budgeted what was similar to this year's projected. Everything else stayed. Close to the same.
I mean, the biggest reason we had an increase in legal. Is the charter.
Yeah.
Our city secretaries.
Maybe the work on the charter, but the expense, the actual hard copy expense came out of.
Yeah, but they they had work on the charter. That's. Is that all like the advertising and all that? No, that's just their legal review, the translation.
Can't write it like that. You have to say it like this.
But that was last year.
So.
Last year.
So I think that um, the rest of that would have come out of election expenses.
Um, yeah, when we had to put it in the um.
When we had the fifty two thousand dollar advertising bill for the charter.
He can't, I think I put it, what did I tell you, in council and legislative four oh one. Questions there?
HR is pretty close to the same.
Um, so this department does have significantly more in their food line items. So. Uh, Margot is in charge of the employee engagement committee and she typically meets with them over lunch. So she'll buy lunch for them. During their meeting. Um, also um. Refreshments or. Snacks for her interviews whenever they are hosting interviews to like donuts and coffee, that kind of thing. Um, will come out of her line item and then her travel stuff.
Or back in the day, we probably would have put that in city council, all other. So it's now. I think it's great that it's in the ride department. Touch it. Who's spending it is? Yes.
Economic development, we're eliminating this department.
Yeah, because Justin didn't meet the deadline, so we're going away with it.
But I've got a great update. Um, the uh, board of directors had a meeting uh, this afternoon and approved the uh, budget. So during our next meeting, we'll have uh, the numbers for Cynthia to input into this.
Think actually typically. So here, so there's two departments or. Pages that are dedicated to economic development. So this one typically be uh, supplies. Everything below personnel will stay zero, zero based. And then they have their own fund, which is Fund Twenty Two. That's where we'll see his. His budget in there, just for reference and then for for our new um, council members.
Main Street.
Everything was pretty similar to last year. The biggest change that you're gonna see is the capital outlet. We do have fifty thousand. Sitting in there for um, a new. Storage place, whatever that's gonna look like, storage place, new building, whatever, whatever that ends up becoming.
That's something we've kicked the can on for a while. I mean, it's an easy thing to kick the can on. Uh, but doesn't mean it's right. This means it's easy. Maybe we can get that done.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you as somebody who has packed up sip and swirl and Main Street events multiple times, it'll be nice to be like. It goes here instead of that goes there and that goes there and that goes to Civic Center. That's that's tough. So. In the middle of the night as we're. Trying to get into that storage unit by the water. Department.
Uh, animal services, four twenty.
Um, again, this is just what we pulled um, from. Police department. Um, we worked with a spreadsheet that uh. Chief O'Brien sent over. Um, kind of tried to make some adjustments where it was necessary. Um, so this is gonna be our first go around with this. So we'll we'll see a more true representation next, next budget year. But this is just what we're thinking initially.
And we met. Uh, with the freezing Nichols uh, team today on. Animal shelter, new animal shelter. This week, uh, myself, Max, Chief O'Brien and. AC coal. They'll get together and they're wanting pictures of our. Current shelter, kind of what we have on the inside and. Just to get a feel of what we have and what where we need to go. One of them asked if our current shelter could be. Salvaged. But no. That we're gonna invite the community with sledgehammers to. Tear it down once we move on. It may only take one swing for the whole thing to come down.
Who asked if it could be salvaged?
One of the consultants just.
I have no idea. How can you admit some like? Citizen has that. Send them on. Tell them to go check it out.
Looking for those.
We need them. Well. It's that's something again, we've kicked the can on for a long time. That's exciting to think that that could finally be. Wind blowing it off the foundation probably helped a little bit. It forced our hand for sure.
That'll wrap up all the depart- well, first, any questions for animal shelter? Awesome. So that's gonna wrap up all the departments that makes up the general fund. The next one that will probably tackle cemetery.
Kind of hit it so we can jump all the way over to four, six, one, one. Waste water.
Wait, so jump to enterprise? Okay, so we're gonna jump to fund six.
Our business side.
So we'll, we'll start with the revenues.
Okay, there we go. Okay, I got you. That's one backup there. That's the key.
One. I'm just going through line by line as well. One of the biggest changes that we made as far as adjustments is gonna be the water revenue, which is thirty six oh one. I think originally Joe uh, budgeted. Anticipating that the water meters were gonna be well in place this fiscal year. Obviously, that hasn't happened because we're still in the implementation phase and we're not gonna go live till the. End of September. I I'm looking over here like Nancy's here. Um, the end of September, um, we won't see actual numbers for a couple. Couple of months, maybe early spring. Um, but um, in talking with James, um, we went ahead and put that. The water revenue right at three million. Um, again, we won't have true numbers until till this time next year. Hopefully we'll have an idea early spring. Um, but that's where that fluctuation is gonna be between projected and then what we're budgeting for next year. Um, the transfer out, that's to the general fund, how I had advised uh, when we talked about revenues there. Um, to cover personnel expenses.
Before, before you leave off water revenue, remember that even though we may generate more revenue. The new meters. Part of paying off those new meters was, was we were anticipating. Capturing revenue that we were losing. We're. There's no better way to say this. We're kind of. Not necessarily stumbling out of the game, but we're. Ruggling out of it because we're we're getting a lot of customers whose. Meter readings were consistently a certain number. And now as a new meter has come online and there's been a. True showing, they're like, well, I've. I've had four thousand gallons for. Months and months and months. And now you're telling me I'm at twenty thousand or I'm at fifty thousand. And they want us to go all the way back to four thousand. They want us to credit their account. Back. So we're trying to work with them. And in understanding that. There are a lot of them.
In a realistic way, because I'll tell you like with. With, I don't have my new meter yet, but if mine jumped from being, I'm expecting an increase, but if it jumped from being one twenty. To over four or five hundred dollars. I know I'm not using that. So is it back? Is it going back on? Is it back paying? Like, am I, because.
We've.
You look at your usage. And then all of a sudden you're up here. I mean, that's a huge. I mean, I think everybody was expecting a bit of an increase, but four hundred dollars a month. That's gonna be.
I I don't think some people realize how much water they may have been using. Because. There'd be there's some of these folks that their meters were reading zero. Where they were reading two thousand gallons and they've been doing that consistently for months. And then suddenly it's fifty to sixty thousand or over a hundred thousand. And they're like. How did that occur? Well, if your readings has been consistent. You don't realize how much water you may have been wasting, or you don't realize you may have a leak somewhere. And that's been the other thing. Well, if we go get a plumber. And they decide it's not us. The city needs to reimburse us for the cost of the plumber. I can tell you probably eighty percent of the time a plumber goes out, the first thing they're gonna say, it's not you, it's the city. Make them come out. And and do this. We're doing our best to work with every single person that comes in or calls that says. The reading's not right. We we go out there, Justin and. Nancy and Savannah are kind of on a committee that looks at them. If if someone's like, I just can't accept this, we go back and do a third, fourth and fifth. Review of it. We know people are going to be upset. It's not a hundred percent their fault. It's not a hundred percent our fault. It's 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 both hands. And so we're trying to find. That happy place in the median to say, okay. X amount of water went through this meter. And we can't just. Discount all of that. We we've got to account for it somehow. So we we try to find a place to say, okay, here's what we we can do. We can credit this amount. But from this point on, you need to be watching your water. You may need to call a plumber. You need to be involved. And then there's some that are like, I don't even live there anymore. Will then turn off your water.
Exactly.
And so.
That would be common sense. When we're doing those reviews, can we look at the neighbors and what as well to say, well. I mean, it's just thinking it would be a good comparison and a good contrast. Well, you know, all the people around you are using similar amounts of water as well. So. Maybe that makes it more likely to be true. Or no one around you is using that much water and your yard is brown. So something else is going on. I mean, just help us to see patterns and.
The first thing we hear is I never water my lawn. And we've gone out and never watered my lawn and it's one of the greatest lawns out there.
I've been watering my yard every day and my yard's still brown. It's insane this year.
It it's tough. I think we all knew this was gonna be tough when the new meters came in. And I know people are frustrated, but we're trying our best to to work through. Every one of them. Some, I know we've made major adjustments and. They're not happy. I mean, I.
Well, what's crazy is if you make huge adjustments and the next month's just as high, they're gonna do the same thing.
So.
I think it's gonna be very telling. It's more of the meters move east. Only because it seems like there's more irrigation there. And to live in those neighborhoods and to see the amount of water that runs on the street in those neighborhoods. And the overspray from that or the overwatering, or I don't know the reason, because it's three o'clock in the morning and I'm not awake. If the project's ninety one percent complete, our time's coming. But it's going to be very telling in this neighborhood. I think that we also have a lot newer meters on. Our side, so ours are likely not gonna be, I'm not, but I'm still expecting an increase.
I'd I'd like to add a small case study that we had in the field. At a concerned citizen. So we went out and visited the house. You know, the the resident was convinced that they didn't have a leak and okay. Well, can we all go and look at this meter? He's adamant the meter doesn't work. Don't care how smart it is. So please ensure that you have all your faucets turned off, you know, double check. Get out to the meter. It's registering one point six gallons per minute. There's about.
Means there's something going.
There's about fourteen hundred minutes in a day, one thousand four hundred and forty minutes. Multiply that by the one point six, you're over twenty six thousand gallons just in that little leak. Or the consumption um, in a month period time. That's not including washing dishes, laundry, all the good stuff that we do. He went back, checked inside his house, his toilet, you know, the little plug that goes in there, how it fills up, stops. It was. It it the flapper was off and that was registering the one point six gallons per minute. He came out, oh wow, you know, those type of things add up. I think as a community, we need to do a campaign and we have discussed about the water conservation. And there's tools that we're not recommending you'll get a new toilet, but just search, you know, and the resident was, oh wow. You know, he was understanding, you know, it these instruments or these tools are so accurate, they even register backlog, loss of pressure. We get negative readings. So it's also a useful tool on the operation side. If we get these negative readings or something happens, we know that something's going on. On that block. So we get both positive and negative readings as well, and they both mean something. So. That was just one case study and you just add that up. And if you got a dripping faucet in the backyard. Those things that anything that goes through this new tool we have is going to get registered. Um. It may not be every case or, but that's just one thing that surprised me. I was like, oh wow, you do the math on it. It's. That's an unbelievable amount of water consumption, twenty seven thousand gallons in a month just from a one point six gallon measurement. So. Um, we have been working with every citizen and we've exhausted efforts, which is what we're here to do. Um, but. After this, this project has to sort of pay for itself. So we can't continue to lose revenue. Um, on that end, but it was surprising.
I'm blown away at thirty five oh seven. I mean, the landfill and tipping fees. Were. Nearly two hundred thousand dollars more than projected. Thankful, but.
Well, that's the double edged sword in that our cell, our cell that we just built is already getting.
Yeah.
And that's one thing we're looking at with the motto is do we have to adjust that timeframe? Because we were about every four years, we were doing one or the other.
And it wasn't the storm. Because we didn't allow roofing materials, right?
No, we allowed roofing materials out there.
So then was it the storm?
It contributed a good, a good piece to it.
It's just what our citizens put in their dumpsters from the storm.
Good friend.
And then the debit card, debit credit card fee is is in there. Thirty six oh nine.
Then questions about revenue?
Why are we five hundred thousand off of the founding, yes, we got sidetracked. I mean, we were seven point six in last year's budget and we're budgeted to be seven point one.
So if you'll look at the transfer out, um, this is the other fund that transfers to the general fund, when it was. When the budget was made, it didn't account for the three percent COLA that was approved last year. So that's why you see we budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand, but it's actually come out to four sixty-three. I went ahead and made that adjustment and then the four hundred seventy-seven accounts for the three percent that's in the budget right now. Does that make sense?
I think so, yes. And we don't have anything in the internal finance.
Yeah, so there is no, um, nothing is projected next year for the internal finance fund as of yet. So if, if that is something that happens, that you guys want to utilize that fund for any of the projects, then it'll, the number will change.
Any other questions on that one? Uh, four, six, one, water and wastewater administration.
Um, so the biggest change that you're going to see in here, um, is going to be related to personnel, uh, per James. Um, I wouldn't, I had put in a request for a, an additional STE, James told me to go ahead and put it in here, um. Nancy is planning on retiring and then I think I have hopefully three years. Um, that's what we're looking at somewhere in between two to three, Nancy is essential not to, not just to City Hall. To the city of Lubbock, but to the community at large, Nancy's the one that runs the water bills. Nancy's the one that, um, is currently running payroll, um, that Nancy has a lot, a lot of hats. So in order for us to replace her, um, and talking it through with Justin and James, we're going to need someone to like come in. A year or so in advance and just sit with her daily, there are stuff that she does daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly. And to be able to capture all of that, it is really going to take someone to just sit with her and take notes and ask questions and. Um, do it themselves with Nancy over her shoulders, um. Nancy, that, that, those are going to be some big shoes to fill, so we're going to try our best, um, but at the advice of James, we went ahead and plugged that. Full-time person in here to allow us that, um, room to go ahead and. Look for someone to start training and, and get, get, uh, in Nancy's, Nancy's world and start pulling that information from her.
The reality.
Yeah, um, another big increase is going to be professional services, that's accounting for credit, a majority of credit card fees. Um, this fun, this department eats up or pays for a lot of the credit card fees. It's about like an eighty percent of.
Yeah.
Of what each fee or the fees that come in monthly, so that's why that increased so drastically.
But we're looking at doing that differently.
Right, correct, right, so this is like worst case scenario.
Pass it on completely to the customer, right? Is, I'm paying my water bill, I mean, there's an ACH option, a cash option or write us a.
Yes.
And I write a check unless I forget and then I go online real quick before the deadlines, yeah, and I pay my fee.
Reality is we're eating up of that fee right now.
Because it's all with everybody else's on this.
But if I go get my tags at the courthouse right now, that's a hundred percent passed on to me.
Yeah.
So.
In most places you go to, it's.
Yes, I mean.
That's why I still have a checkbook.
And just for being in the finance world, the general population does not know even what the word ACH means.
Oh, yeah.
And so to be able to set that up on a bank draft, sounds very intimidating to them. And, and not that they have to do it or would want to do it, but maybe they don't even know that option's there. And I will say from being in that world. Not throwing us under the bus, but to set up a city water ACH takes longer than setting up any other bill.
I don't, I don't know, I.
Takes months to get that established, but I can change your Netflix in thirty seconds.
It's in, I'm going to use the wrong word. For cha, for the system to recognize, for N code to recognize, hey, it's changed. That's where it is, it's not the last of like the ladies not putting in for work, um, or anything like that, as soon as they get the information, they put it in, end of day. It is literally the system taking the time to realize, don't pull from this one, pull from this one, so.
Cynthia, I won't say anything about what I think about Tyler technologies, but I know that's not your fault, but.
Tyler Tech is one of the best out there and I, I, I know it's frustrating. But it too, a part of it is city and we are. Making strides with them, they're actually sending a representative to come out here and spend a couple of days with us.
Cool.
Uh, to figure out what is going on.
Maybe there's an update we don't know about.
And, or there's. Things that maybe we tried to manipulate because we didn't want to pay for a module.
Got it, okay.
I mean, there's a public safety module that makes their jobs a hundred times easier and we chose not to buy that and. Create a whole new system, those are things that we're peeling back the onion to figure it out. And, you know, very similar to the water meters, I think Tyler also shares some of the burden and I think that's why. Um, they're coming out, the, the judge informed me today that, I don't know how she's their favorite. But they're giving her a free day of.
No.
She's getting a free day of training, they, they're asking her to come to Lubbock and they're coming here to let her have a free day of training.
Well, that sounds like huge potential progress that could happen.
We're trying.
Trying something different.
Can we pause until we get a quorum back in the room?
Yes, it all survived.
I just wanted to make sure you don't do anything wrong.
Just close your eyes.
He's a role follower.
Darn quorum.
She's in the building, Elvis is in the building.
Almost eight o'clock.
That's what it's hoping to do. Yeah, forty-nine, the two thousand dollars across the board.
Just, just food for thought.
Supposed to calm, because they went cold.
On their gun.
On their gun, about like. That's going to create all kinds of issues.
Yeah.
See this, sad news. Not saying.
The city of Sweetwater employee killed while responding to a water leak, so.
That he was fatally injured while making repairs to a leak.
Oh fatally. Did we go off again?
Um, no, but Andrea pointed out when you left the room, we lost our quorum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
She wouldn't stop it.
When there's, no, the sound has still been going, the camera went off.
Get a cookie.
Leave that stuff in the room.
Usually there's so many more of us that I don't feel like I have to ask permission.
My bad.
No, you don't have to ask for permission, we just needed to. Well, I could have at least given y'all a heads up, I'm, she's, okay, you gotta go, you gotta.
The rebel in every crowd.
Um, any questions here on, um, water and wastewater admins?
No, I think you're, you're very accurate on what you said about.
Four, six, three wastewater.
Mix water. Everything here across the. Everything is pretty similar aside from, if you will go to the second page, um, the Lubbock, oh, is it water statement?
Lubbock water.
Yeah, so four, four, nine, one, um, as Jane said, that increase is anticipated. Um, so I did already account for it in next year's budget, so that's why you're going to see the big jump from last year's budget to this year. Also, um, for Cremaux, which is the next line item. I'm just seeing what, what's happening already, um, and just.
And James, that's not just Lubbock, and it's every Cremaux community.
Every member, there's eleven member cities of, of all. And very similar to the way our agreement is with city of Lubbock, that we have a percentage of whatever capital pairs they will do. The same thing with Cremaux, you know, fortunately we have Amarillo and Lubbock in there, they'll get a big. Piece of it, Borger will get a big piece playing due well, so. Dakota.
Yes.
It's good for you.
Any questions there?
Fun fact, we were one of the original Cremaux cities.
Everybody's trying to be like us.
Thankfully.
Like we were.
We can hold them hostage, just not reappoint their chairman.
Oh, another difference, um, at the.
They would struggle.
At the guidance of, uh, James and Justin, we did add street signs and poles forty-five, forty-two. They've noticed that our, our signs, um, throughout the public works facilities are really outdated, um, not visually appealing. So, um, prior to this budget, um, the only department that had this line item was streets. So it didn't matter who was buying signs, they would put it in streets, which goes back to us saying, you know, they were just coding it where the money was. So it's not, um. Financially correct, I think is the phrase, anyhow, um, so we went ahead and put that, that line item across the public. Public Works Department, so everything behind, um, four, six, two, will have that line item in there with money budgeted for next.
I'm excited about seeing those new signs, it sounds silly, but when you see something like tired all the time, it's.
Yeah.
Great.
Any questions for water? Are you laughing?
So tired, people were looking at me and, and things looked tired all the time, uh, thanks mayor.
That's like my politically correct version of saying bad.
Wastewater. Really, I don't think there's really anything different in there, other than we got a thirty-some odd million dollar plant. And Cynthia. One of the things we may want to look at doing is incorporating that plant construction. In expense to this line item, this.
Cool, for what?
Well, the reason is, is that there's legislation that's basically saying that. Your. Budget you're considering cannot be more than your previous year's budget.
Like for the treatment plant?
No, for your entire city budget, so if our city budget was ten million dollars.
It's mind blowing.
The next year's budget cannot exceed ten million dollars.
That's not item by item, that's just the total.
That's your total revenue or your total expenditures.
So if we have a wastewater treatment plant in there, we're for sure to come in under.
It's scary in their initial thought, because the first thing that I thought of when I saw that is, you will not be able to give raises to employees. Unless you cut somewhere else. And I, I dislike having to try to. Manipulate or do things, but I have a responsibility, not only to the city, to provide. Physically responsible, but I have a responsibility to take care of my employees as well, because they're the ones that take care of our city. We may need to look to see how we can give ourselves some wiggle room.
How mu, how much do we exceed it?
I have not run numbers.
If that, the, one of the bills that's gaining the greatest traction right now is you cannot exceed at all. If your budget was ten million dollars, the next year's budget has to be ten million or less.
As we said right here tonight, how much do we exceed last year's?
Uh, I don't know that final number yet, certainly, but.
Couldn't we just add a page that says it there, though, I mean.
Well, that's what we're going to look at, is, is to see, uh.
Is that a budget or expenditures?
Well, you could argue it's, it's revenue because we brought in the bond revenue and then you've got expenditures coming out of that. Bond proceed. We're just going to have to.
Potential loopholes here.
Right, well, you should put it in.
Legal.
Yeah.
You, you're making me panic, right?
That's my job.
Hey.
Water resource, zeros.
Totally zero, yeah, and then.
Developers capital.
And so it should be sanitation, that, uh, everything here should be the same across the board.
We do, one of the things that they've asked us to look at, that is becoming a thorn out there. Is tire disposal, is that we are losing big time on tire disposals.
Ones that are brought in legally, the ones that we are picking up that are illegal.
The ones that are brought in legally, because it costs us way more than what charging to do it. But then if you. Charge too much, then they just dump them out in the county and then the county brings them in and there's no charge. It's, it's a catch twenty, so we're trying to figure out how to, to manage that.
Probably every community around here is dealing with that, and we found so many tires in the storm.
I still don't know where they all came from.
They have babies.
The form, the rain made them reproduce.
Like gremlins.
They were.
Um, one of the line items that might stick out is that very first one, supervision, so we're. More than doubling of the budget, that's because that's where our, uh, money is sitting for the public works director. And assistant public works director that we anticipate.
Cynthia, the professional services, the forty-four thirty-one, it's on the, uh, projected. It's just three hundred and fifty thousand more than projected.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember what comes out of this, if I didn't adjust it to match this year, it's because this, this year was an outlier. In comparison, I, I did, I looked at the previous five years.
Can we break this down, try to figure out?
Yes, I can.
Questions on that one, will we jump over swimming pool?
Hey, I think swimming pool is just the same as well, everything should be relatively the same. Um, casual always fluctuates, that's where, um, all of the lifeguards are paid out of, it just depends how many. Uh, Justin is able to hire.
Which seems like it went so much smoother this year.
It did, he, he had a record number of returners.
Yeah, it's great.
Fun fact, they have five to seven hundred kids a week in our pool. It's five to seven hundred people come into the pool.
It's definitely used.
And it closes Sunday.
Budget is eighteen thousand dollars less. The budget's eighteen thousand dollars less.
But, oh, the improvements, um.
Yes, well, that's definitely some of it.
But maybe because we don't have the pool steady back yet.
Yeah, I feel like that's what it was, they leave that there in case a pump.
Yeah.
Or something of that nature, I think, um, when we were going through it, we decided to pull it out, just pending what the study shows.
That many people going through there is, is a great number to think about that. What would it be if it was awesome? Well, because we, I know we have leakage to Brownfield and to Littlefield.
Questions on that one? Streetlights are. What they are.
Yeah.
Uh, it's amazing that the occasional phone call I get from folks who want to know why they're charged for streetlights.
They put their lights on their block.
But they just.
I don't understand people. I don't understand people.
But they just most people don't think about it. They just
I can understand wanting to know about their water. I don't understand the people fighting it, but like wanting to know, but a street light? Like, that is common sense. But they'll say, but I don't have a light on my block. And I said, but there are lights up and down. But you drive, do you not?
Right, yeah.
Everywhere else, everywhere you drive. I'm glad y'all take those calls. I would, y'all would fire me for being
I would send you to customers.
Right, then, then I'll try. No, somebody called me and asked me about their streetlights.
Cynthia, only other operational fund we have is Fund Three. You want to go over that one real quickly?
And cemetery?
Yeah, cemetery. That's the last.
Thought we covered it earlier.
We didn't. You skipped over it.
No, we talked about cemetery in future and
Okay.
We talked about the growth and
I'm losing my mind. Any immediate questions or overview questions, information um, that would be beneficial for next meeting?
On Monday night, we have a very simple agenda. We only got two or three items, so we're going to spend some time on budget.
We're going to talk about capital expenditures.
We're going to talk about capital. We'll try to hit that Monday. Tuesday is to wrap up anything else that we need to so we can finalize and and put this thing together for presentation uh, for the eleventh. Y'all are sneaking information.
Yes.
That's right.
Getting information.
All the other one.
Is there anything special that y'all are looking for or? If you think of anything, let us know. Uh, I will add to this memo about transferring or reducing uh, funding of cemetery from three cents to two cents. I know, and I tried to explain, and if I need to explain this further, I tried to put this here to give you something. So when someone asks, you know, why are we doing all this? They're going to be mad. At least got a starting point to help them understand that several of these are beyond our control. And simplest one, wastewater, we've had this discussion numerous times and you've had them years before this of having to do this new plant. So. They could suck you to dirt.
Hey, no wonder business we are dirt.